Welcome, everybody. I'd like to open the regular meeting of the Rockville Center Board of Education for Tuesday, May 31st, 2020, '22. Getting late. Would everybody stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we proceed, I'd like to ask everybody to participate in a moment of silence for the 21 people who lost their lives a week ago today. Opportunity for students, if there are any students in the room who would like to come up and speak to the board or speak to the audience, we welcome you at this point. Not seeing anybody? We will move on to a sad but proud time for the district. Mr. Bartels?
Thank you, Mr. O'Shea. Each year, we like to do a recognition of a number of our staff members. Some of us are leaving, some of us are staying with us. So we want to start out with those teachers and other staff members who are retiring from the school district. I'm going to announce everybody's name and make a few comments, and I think Mr. O'Shea will hand out certificates. So please come up front when you hear your name, if you're here. Linda Silva Castro. Lynn has worked in the district for 37 years, as a physical education teacher for several of the district's schools, most of them in the elementary. She's also been a recreation aide, advisor for various clubs, teacher in the summer program, and at one point was the middle school girls' soccer coach. Jean began as a teacher aide and then started as a home and careers teacher in the middle school. She retires with 25 years of service in the school district. She's also been an advisor for several clubs in the middle school, as well as a teacher aide in the summer program. Deborah began as a teaching assistant and then started as an elementary teacher at Covert School. She retires with 15 years of service to the district. In addition, she has worked recently in spring adult education. Laura began as a teaching assistant and then started as an elementary teacher at Watson School. She retires with 24 years of service in the district. Patricia has served the district for 24 years as a home and career teacher in the middle school. She's also been advisor for several clubs, including the Home and Careers Club and the Lisa Wasserman. Lisa worked as an ENL teacher at Watson School and Southside Middle School, providing 22 years of service to the district.
Congratulations.
We also have some teaching assistants retiring. Kathryn began as a teacher aide and then started as a teaching assistant at Wilson School. She's provided 21 years of service to the district, including being advisor for several clubs and a recreation aide at Project Great. Mary Ann Manasia. Mary Ann was a teaching assistant at Southside High School, providing 15 years of service. Anne Smith. Anne began as a teacher aide and then started as a teaching assistant at Wilson School, and she's been with us for 23 years. Diane Tettelman. Diane began as a teacher aide and then started as teaching assistant at Hewitt School, and she's been with us for 13 years. Susan's provided 20 years of service as a teacher aide at Covert School. Margaret's provided 15 years of service as a teacher aide at Hewitt School. Jill's provided 20 years of service as an occupational therapist at Covert School. She's also been SAD advisor. Mary started working as an account clerk in central office and then became a confidential secretary in the pupil personnel office, providing 20 years of service to the Rockville Center. Maureen has worked as a secretary for the Director of Physical Education, Health, and Athletics, providing 10 years of service in the Rockville Center schools. Finally, Ken Griffin. Ken Griffin started as a security aide in the district, then became a cleaner custodian at Covert School. He's provided 18 years of service to the district, most recently working at Wilson School. Those are our retirees. One final round of applause for all of those retirees. Also, at this time, we'd like to recognize several teachers for their appointments to tenure. Actually, we're going to start off with an assistant principal, Mr. Patrick Walsh. Assistant principal at Southside High School. Jessica is a special education teacher at Covert School. Andrea Cooper Smith. Andrea is a mathematics teacher at Southside High School. Kelsey is a physical education teacher and has support from many schools, working at Covert, Wilson, and Southside Middle School. Dylan is a science teacher at Southside Middle School. Cody is a music teacher, also at Southside Middle School. And Patricia Takich. We also want to recognize at this time some teachers for this service as mentors. I would like to turn this portion over to Janine Sempino.
Thank you. Congratulations to all of our retirees and our tenured teachers and professionals. It's just been wonderful working with you all, so I just wanted to congratulate you. The role of a great mentor, a great teacher-mentor, is building a professional relationship that encourages continuous support. According to an Association for Supervision and Curriculum Development article, "A good mentor is committed to the role of mentoring. A good mentor is accepting of a beginning teacher. A good mentor is skilled at providing instructional support. A good mentor is effective in different interpersonal contexts. A good mentor is a model of continuous learning." Rockville Center, all of our mentors and our teachers exemplify this and more. The Rockville Center Mentor Program began back in 2002. It is thriving due to the wonderful RVC teachers who participate and the amazing facilitators who run the program. The past two years, we have been fortunate to have Mr. McCollum lead our mentor program. He is knowledgeable, approachable, and is a wonderful mentor. It is my pleasure to introduce, as he's lovingly referred to, as Mr. Mack.
You made me sound so beautiful. Thank you. Good night, everyone. My name is Darno McCollum, also known as Mr. Mack, and it's a pleasure to be here. Before I go into this speech, I just wanted to thank the beautiful people of RVC for being so supportive of me through a rough month of losing loved ones. I appreciate so many of you for being by my side in such a dark time. This will be my last year as a mentor program facilitator, and I'm going to miss building new relationships with everyone throughout the district. Enough about me, though. We have a bunch of people that need their roses tonight. We are here to recognize the mentors of 2021-22 Mentor Program, and the purpose of this program is to provide support for new teachers and counselors in the district in order to ease their transition into the building. We take pride in increasing their retention of teachers and counselors in public schools by sharpening their skills in order to improve student achievement in accordance with state learning standards. Our mentors are expected to work with their mentees in adult learning theory, teacher development theory, and peer coaching. And as cool and calm as we look, please just know, this was a hectic year for all of us. Once I saw dozens of students quarantined, I almost lost hope. I'd be worried at back at home, thinking maybe little Johnny might have to wake up from dozing off in a comfortist's bed. But fortunately, another lockdown never came our way. With so much madness that went on in our world from September until now, we made it. Not only did we make it, but we pulled through. Let's take this moment to clap it up for ourselves, please. Thank you. And without further ado, let's recognize our mentors of 2021-22. Maria Argandizo from Hewitt School. Patricia Barkwell from Southside Middle School. Robert Bolsh from Southside Middle School. Kristen Bach from Riverside. Kristy Benino from Riverside School. Christine Brown from Southside High School. Kristen Carroll from Southside Middle School. Brian Cloke from Southside Middle School. Mary Ann Cunningham from Wilson School. Michelle DiMartino from Covert School. Karen Felkham from Riverside School. Mary Ann Fieromonte from Wilson School. Darcy Gilchrist from Southside Middle School. Nicole North from Southside High School. Lisa Collett from Covert. Greg Linker from Hewitt. Gina Lukazuski from Covert. Kathleen Mark from Southside High. Stephanie Markwalter from Southside Middle School. Jennifer May from Southside High School. Amy O'Leary from Wilson School. Gina Pasture from Hewitt. Anthony Pomponio from Southside Middle School. Melissa Rice from Watson. Michael Saglinbean from Riverside. Adam Sissick from Southside High School. Luis Sommers from Hewitt. Rachel Vos from Hewitt. Jonathan Wiesenberg from Southside Middle School. Last but not least, Christopher Zappi from Covert. And those are our 2021-22 mentors.
There's coffee and cookies out in the hallway, just a little time to mingle and congratulate everybody. Year events from the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation. Wanted to ask Mr. Murphy to kind of talk about that for a minute.
Hi. Hello. Hello. So thanks to both boards, both the Ryan O'Shea Foundation and this board, for giving us the opportunity to bring Sources of Strength into the high school. This is our second year, which was under challenging circumstances. We knew we were researching with Mr. O'Shea and the foundation a need to help students in a way that we didn't exactly know how. We tried a buddy program, a mentor program. We knew what we wanted, but didn't have the big picture. And in comes the Sources of Strength program, which practices what they call an upstream mental health approach. Mental health and mental health approaches to saving kids can become very dark and very heavy. Their approach is to, rather than deal with students immediately in crisis, go upstream and create a culture in a community where that is no longer necessary or less necessary. So the goal is to make the community healthy, make the building healthy, and in so doing, the students who are immersed in it then are not just healthy themselves, but can help each other. So this is the second year, and the number of adult advisors doubled to 25, and the number of student advisors goes up to 60. So each of those groups have very specific roles. They do collaborate as a team, but their goal is then to reach out to the rest of the student body and the teacher body to make sure everyone in the building not only has a trusted adult but a safe place to go and to talk to in the event that they just need to talk before crises occur. And counterintuitive as it is, it's focused on fun and games. I remember Mr. O'Shea walking into one of our training sessions, and the kids are throwing shoes in the middle of your auxiliary gym. It's like, I can explain, but it's all purposeful. It's developing a sense of purpose. And I was talking to Mr. O'Shea just now. There's a difference between being a school that has a Sources of Strength program in it to becoming a Sources of Strength school. And I think that was the transition this year, where it's not a sub-program, it's part of the fabric of everything that we do. What $1,000 is paying for is a culminating experience on June 10th, which we started last year, and it was met with such a positive response that we're replicating it, where every student in the building passes through one period a day a Sources of Strength experience, whether it's the games, the Sources of Strength wheel, an experience of things that we've done this year. We had a trusted adult campaign. We've had another campaign of things that help us, where the students identified those things, meditative habits, habits of mind, spirituality, health, physical wellness, that helped them in times of need. So the students pass through this so that we are sure that we address every student, whether it's through food, eating always helps, fun and games, T-shirts to make sure that it's visible. And then the manifestation of that comes out in all kinds of different ways. Teachers using Sources of Strength vernacular when they're analyzing characters in books. I'm not making that up. I mean, the kids are reading Romeo and Juliet, and one teacher asked the students, "What sources of strength did Romeo and Juliet not use that put them in the place that they are? Why did their trusted adult not achieve what we would see as a healthy relationship?" When it's things that start to occur like that, you know it's immersed now. It's not just a push-in now, it's just a part of the everyday vernacular. Students making murals in the walls. It's not just an "oh yeah, by the way" thing. It's a slogan, just like the Southside logo, that becomes part of who we are. So I'm super appreciative. I'm really looking forward to the June 10th event, as well as, like we said, re-identifying ourselves. These are uncharted orders. We're in year three, and it's not like there's a ton of schools in the immediate area who have... We were at the foreground of bringing this into the region. So now we're re-identifying what does the Sources of Strength program look in year three. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. I'd just like to invite some of the board members of the Ryan Patrick O'Shea to present the check.
We are just speaking with Mr. Murphy, and the successes of the program mean the world to the foundation. We came in, like Mr. Murphy said, uncharted in Rockville Center, uncharted anywhere really around, and we funded the program in the high school first. Now we're in the elementary schools, and hopefully next year or by the year after it'll be K-12, which will be an amazing thing for all the students in Rockville Center, to hear the connection that the teachers and the students are connecting Sources of Strength as part of a regular dialogue in school is such an amazing thing. The foundation has been trying to do whatever we can to help students in stress, and if we can reach before they become into such a bad place, if we can help them figure out a way out of that, give them the tools to respond to the stresses in life, we've more than achieved the goals that we're setting forward. And, you know, ending the threat of suicide is what our mission statement is, but that can start way before that last step of determination. It could start in the well-being of our kids as they come forward with just depression and anxiety and trying to help them through those things. And I believe, just my own seeing the program work, I believe it helps the teachers and the staff in our schools also become part of the fabric of the students, and the ability to interact with each other in a more understanding and compassionate way helps everybody in the building and everybody in our community. So it is a great program in our eyes, and we are honored to support not only the functioning of the program, but the extra things that the school district is looking for, like this end-of-the-year program. It was an amazing thing last year, especially because that was the time they could go out and take their masks off and go out in the field and have a DJ and have snacks and games. So that was very uplifting for the community. So we'll see how this year goes. I'm sure it's going to be a great one also, and we look forward to future events with the Social Strength program involved into that. Thank you very much.
All right, so we will go back now to... Have to find our place, I'm sorry. Mr. Bartels, we'll have an update on the annual election and budget vote.
Yes, we'd like to take this opportunity to thank the residents for overwhelmingly passing the 2022-2023 school budget for next year with a 65% pass rate. The community has always been supportive of the budget, and the students will benefit from the increased programs and support the district is able to provide. In the election for the board seat, Donna Downing defeated John O'Shea and will start her term on July 1st. John has served the district for many years, and we will miss him, and I'm sure he will stay involved in many ways.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. We're on our email section and still new to how it's handling. Our first email was from a district resident regarding the illegality of committees. That was a comment I made during the candidates forum, and I spoke wrong, and I have a little statement. In a public work session of the Board of Education a few months back, the topic of committees was addressed. There were concerns...
There were concerns raised in letters to the BOE and from the public over the past few years regarding the formation and function of committees. Many people felt excluded from or not appropriately represented by committee structure. Certain board members objected to their lack of participation on committees and insufficient information shared. The board attorneys were present and publicly stated that many existing committees were not legally required. The attorney indicated it would violate open meeting laws to have more than two board members on a committee, as three board members would constitute a quorum and involve the open meeting law requirement. The solution to these problems implemented by the board was to eliminate those committees not legally required and to conduct the discussion of business formally done in committees in public at an open meeting, thus complying with the law and having board members and community members receive all the information and participating fully in the process. My purpose was to explain why we, as the board, did away with these committees not legally required and why we did not replace them with a committee consisting of more than two board members that would be illegal or in violation of the open meeting laws. I'm not a lawyer and may not have articulated the legal reasons in the best way, but I acted as an elected representative should in listening to both the concerns of the board and the public and finding a remedy that complied with the laws as stated concerns, as stated, I'm sorry, it's dark, I can't read here. By our attorney, stated by our attorneys while allowing the public to fully participate in the decision-making of the district in an open and transparent way. I hope that this process will continue even without me as the representative. This remains your school district. You deserve a voice and a seat at the table. You deserve to be involved in the important decisions that affect your children's educational experience. You are entitled to a Board of Education that not only understands that, but represents your rights. So I made a mistake. I said "illegal." It was not illegal. My apologies to the public for that.
Anyone else want to add something? The next email is regarding graduation dates. That was addressed, Mr. Bartels.
Yeah, that'll be noted for next year. That's the times at which the graduations are for the middle school and the high school, so that they don't conflict.
So that was an email to ask why we have it so close together? Or the same day? Because it makes it difficult, it makes it difficult for parents to go back and forth. So that'll be a topic of discussion for next year's, next year's...
As a parent with two graduating this year, one at the high school and one at the middle school, I concur with the person who wrote the letter that it was very difficult to try to make... I don't know why we do it that way, but...
Mr. Gavin? The next email is a district residence regarding torn American flags. That has been taken care of. I know that they took down the damaged flags and replaced them with new flags. Thank you, Mrs. Elberti, for taking the lead on that. A residence regarding the camera for the Watson doors, the back doors. We've been talking about that for a while. Mr. Bartels?
Yeah, we've pushed that up from the smart bond process, and we're getting that purchased right away.
And then there were two emails from district residents regarding the New York State Regents.
Right. The principals had sent out letters regarding the region's scoring for this year last Friday, and I'll be talking about it later on in the agenda.
Thank you. Superintendent's report?
The board has asked for a follow-up discussion on our region's scores and rankings, as well as our IB and AP scores. Our incoming superintendent, Mr. Matt Gavin, has met with the high school faculty and administration to begin discussions on these items. And we will have a follow-up discussion at a meeting either over the summer or in September, where there can be additional public participation. On the COVID front, while we've seen an increase over the last two to three weeks in numbers, so we were up to about 50 students, that number has come down. Currently, we only had six students on quarantine support instruction today, and we will only have two on quarantine support instruction tomorrow. The Universal Free Lunch, Free School Lunch and Breakfast Program is ending at the end of this school year, and as of yet, has not been extended for the next school year. For those students who may qualify for free and reduced-priced lunches, under the normal guidelines, it is important that they fill out the applications as soon as possible for the next year, so they don't lose out on that program. The unconscionable tragedy in Uvalde, Texas, has again reminded us to review all of our safety protocols. The district has a number of safety practices that we employ to keep our districts and staff, to keep our students and staff safe. We have security guards in each school building. And in next year's budget, we have actually added a floater for the elementary schools to ensure coverage when someone is absent. We have a visitor monitoring system with a vestibule to keep visitor outside the building until they are approved for entry. We have single points of entry to the building after the school day begins, and all doors are kept locked. Employees have swipe access cards to return to the building from lunch or recess outdoors. We have camera systems at all buildings with both internal and external cameras, totaling over 500 cameras in the district. These cameras are monitored locally by the security and administrative staff in each school building, as well as by central administration. The Rockville Center Police Department also has access to these cameras if necessary. We do work closely with the Rockville Center Police Department, as well as the Nassau County Police. Both departments have provided a police presence over the past week and have routinely patrolled our grounds and stopped into our buildings. And they do this on an ongoing basis throughout the year. COVID parents should note that the Rockville Center Police are alerted to any 911 calls and may be the first to respond to COVID due to their proximity. The police also have swipe access cards should there be an emergency and they need to get into a locked building. District administrators and certain employees have access to the Nassau County Rave System, which is an app on our phones, which will alert police immediately of an active threat, showing the exact location of the person making the call. Each school building conducts annual drills for lockdowns and emergency evacuations. We have also had active shooter drills take place with police and staff members. We have asked all of our administrators to review all of these protocols, and if there are any systems that are not working properly, to alert central office to have them repaired immediately. If students are experiencing concerns about going to school or any anxiety whatsoever, parents should contact their building administration and PPS staff for support and resources to deal with their particular situation.
Thank you, Mr. Bartels. Can, anybody have any questions?
I actually just had one question regarding security. Do we consult with any external firms who come in and do audits of our procedures, our processes, or provide any additional training for staff members on different types of drills and how successful we are with them?
We do have meetings on a routine basis with Nassau County Police. They have meetings with countywide, with all school districts, where we get invitations to. We've had central office staff, as well as building staff, attend those meetings. And they provide the latest updates and so forth. We also get notifications on a routine basis from the Nassau County Police, as well as BOSI's Health and Safety Liaison. They have a safety liaison who makes recommendations. We have not had him out to our district recently, but that's something we could do. That's somebody that works, again, with all Nassau County school districts to make recommendations for improvements in building security.
Yeah, I would definitely like to look into that. I mean, just having an extra pair of eyes that aren't per se in-house sometimes can help us root out issues that we don't even know that we have. In addition, when we have different types of drills, like lockdowns, do the police come and oversee the drills being done? Again, to give feedback on what went well and what we could be doing better, or are those completely conducted in-house?
Those are completely conducted in-house.
That would be something else I'd wonder if we could get the Rockville Center Police to come and kind of do overview when we're doing these drills, again, just to kind of move through the buildings. Again, I think the more eyes that we have, the better we could be.
Absolutely. I think they look forward to that.
I think a few years ago, I don't know, I attended something at the high school. I don't know if it was Stop the Bleed, if I'm saying it wrong. And there was a full drill. Students participated as actors. They acted as victims, and it was a whole thing done. The police were involved. It was a coordinated effort. I don't know if PTA did it or if the district did it, but it was very well done for that purpose.
Yep. Yeah, the district did it in consultation with, I believe, Northwell Health.
Right. Thanks.
We can have that done again. That was a good program.
It was a great drill.
Did we stop that because of COVID?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We stopped a lot of these because of COVID.
That might be something considered as you go forward. Robert, on the free lunch program, is there, I mean, because we've been giving, you know, providing free lunch for everybody for two years now or three years?
Two years.
Two years. Is there any way to reach out or maybe make sure people know that they have to apply now so nobody falls short in September? Because you don't want, you know, you don't want somebody coming to school next year thinking, you know, I've gotten free lunch for two years now, and now I didn't fill out. So how do we do something like that, maybe to everybody in the district?
The information does go out by the individual buildings. I know each of the staff in the individual buildings, when they know families. Again, many of our PPS staff know which families need those applications, so we'll push them out that way, make the announcement tonight, try to get to another group of people. There are also, we put it in the Herald, there's an announcement that we need to make. It has to be publicized every year for the Free and Reduced School Lunch Program. So they all go out, all those different ways.
And come the first day of school next year, no matter what, we'll still offer if somebody needs for now, at least in the beginning of the year, till things like that can be taken care of?
Absolutely. Yeah. And those individuals, we deal with that with our administrative staff and school lunch staff to make sure if there is somebody in need who hasn't filled it out, we'll get that paperwork done right away.
And I did say something a few months ago about the entry into the buildings that some of them aren't working. If there's some way to, you know, keep a better control, a better check on that just to make sure it's repaired as soon as possible and not, you know, waiting a long term for repairing those anti-room entryways, just to make sure that's functioning?
Exactly. That's the key, is making sure they're all working properly. And we've addressed that with all of our building principals. We did have, I think there were two systems that were not fully functional at that time when you made that announcement. I believe they've both been corrected at this point.
Okay.
Mr. Bartels, going back to the resources. Instead of having our parents or our students ask the buildings, is there a way to proactively put those resources on our websites? I know sometimes we divide them out according to age group, so I don't know if it's better to do it in each building or maybe Ms. Love's page in the district.
Yeah, that's why I think, we were thinking it was better to do it by buildings, because there were different needs for different families.
So can we just proactively post them where appropriate then, as opposed to having parents ask?
Sure. Oh, absolutely, we can make postings.
My question was about communication. First, a comment, thank you for, even before the tragedy of last week, you had sent an email out to parents that had questioned why we had police presence at one of the elementary schools recently. And I appreciate that you got that out quickly. It turned out the next day, we had police presence just to follow up with what had happened in terms of the call, and I think parents were then concerned. So maybe we can improve, you know, explaining to our community the relationship we have with our police department and when they are going to visit us. A routine, maybe there's a communication strategy we can come up with so that parents don't see police presence at elementary schools, especially now, heightened awareness and, you know, anxiety over it. But just making sure parents understand why there's police presence at different schools is important. And just again, thank you for communicating out quickly that day. I know a lot of the Hewitt families were unnerved at the way things were happening with police presence, so thank you for that.
Mr. Bartels' cabinet report?
Don't know. I don't think we have anything tonight. Nope.
Quiet night in the cabinet.
Yep.
All right, we're in items for discussion. Mr. Bartels, this is you again.
Yes, just a short PowerPoint on the American Rescue Plan funding. We actually did this last year. The state's requiring us to do this again this year. It's similar to the presentation we had on the foundation aid funding. The state wants us to have a public presentation of how we plan to use the funds. So the funding we have provided from the American Rescue Plan is $2.8 million. We do require plan of use for that. The funds can be expended from March 13th, 2020, the beginning of the pandemic, all the way through September 30th of 2024. This is a one-time aid source. It is part of federal stimulus funds, but can be used for just about any purpose COVID-related. I also wanted to mention the CRRSI, the Corona Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations. This is an additional $1.2 million. There is no plan of use required for this particular money, but I wanted to include it here as, because it's similar to the American Rescue Plan funding. Again, similar timeframe for allocation of expenses, and again, a one-time expense to be used for almost any COVID-related purpose. So this is a summary of how we plan to use these funds. We've broken it down into different categories. We have heating, ventilating, and air-conditioning maintenance to keep our systems running and to repair any broken units. We have monies to provide additional academic support teachers, psychologists, additional social workers, dealing with social emotional health, academic support teachers to help deal with learning loss, guidance counselors and special education teachers, again, to deal with COVID-related issues, classroom teachers. It's really a lot of our quarantine support instruction, and same as other instructional personnel, and summer and after-school programs. So we have different programs that we're using to provide additional supports to students after the school day. Also for custodial overtime and security overtime, which really was used over the past year in cleaning our buildings and maintaining security during the pandemic. So that's really a summary of the use of those funds. This last slide, which is a little difficult to read, is really, goes through the different reasons that you can use American Rescue Plan funding. It has many different uses, but simply it's to safely return students to in-person instruction by reimbursing overtime to clean classrooms, providing security to ensure visitors, maintaining social distancing and following appropriate COVID protocols, reimbursing the district for HVAC systems, providing additional staffing to maximize in-person instructional time, reimbursing the district for funding additional purchases of educational technology, which can support remote learning. At least 20% of the funding will be used to address learning loss, and we have addressed more than the 20% for that. Provide ongoing social emotional support strategies to meet the mental academic needs of the students and to provide extended learning opportunities after school and during the summer. So all these different activities, our programs, many of which we normally do provide, but this is to increase the participation in those programs.
So this will all be posted on the website?
Yes.
All four slides or five slides?
All the slides.
Okay. Starting?
Starting tomorrow.
Tomorrow. Any questions?
Just a question about the after-school supports that we had. Are we going to continue doing them in the same manner next year as that was proposed?
Yes, we will.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Bartels.
Universal pre-K. As many of you know, the district was awarded funding to implement a pre-K program in the Rockville Center School District. The district issued a request for proposals for a provider to administer this universal pre-K program in Rockville Center for next year. Based on limited funding per student provided by the state, there was only one applicant who could meet the state's program requirements within the funding allowed. That was the JCC program, which is down Long Beach Road. Several members of the board and administration toured the facility, asked questions, and were pleased with the facility and the program. Our registration was open last week, and will continue to the end of this week, when we will see if we need to convene a lottery if we have more registrants than the program can fit. So even though the state had provided funding for up to 149 students, the JCC indicated that they only had space for 116. As of this evening, we are... As of this evening, we are about 114, 115?
110.
110. We had 110 registrants. We actually had a couple more, but we've been vetting them. I think we had a couple that were applying who didn't even live in the district. I think somebody applied who only had a one-year-old. So, so we're right there. Hopefully, we can get everybody situated. If the JC, if we do exceed that 116 number and the JCC cannot increase the number of seats offered, we will need to hold a lottery. That's the update for pre-K.
Well, they might be excited applying their one-year-olds, because when our boys started, we were told we had to enroll them at birth.
That may be where they did it.
At some of the, at some of the pre-Ks.
So if anybody's out there who is interested in the program, who hasn't registered, there's still a few more days.
Mr. Bartels? Are there any questions from the board? Mrs. Hackett, you went, Mrs. Ferenzina, you went to see the facility and?
It was lovely. The people there were lovely, and they had, it was clean, it was being all repainted for us. They had great ideas, and I think they even included a swimming portion, because there's a pool there. So it really looked wonderful to me.
We do not provide transportation, though, right? That's just a?
No, we do not provide transportation with that program.
Thank you. Mr. Bartels, again, you're busy tonight. Item for information.
High school regents. The high school middle school principals sent out letters on Friday addressing the regents exams, and I just wanted to reiterate the procedures we'll be using for regents exams this year. These procedures stem from a letter that came from the New York State Commissioner of Education, who stated, quote, "The inclusion of regents exam scores in the calculation of final course grades is neither required nor recommended." So this throws this year's regents exams into some more controversy, which actually began with the cancellation of the U.S. History and Government Regents, which was scheduled for tomorrow, which will now be a regular school day for all high school students. This exam was canceled because the state felt there were certain trigger questions on the exam which could relate to the Buffalo Tops market attack and negatively impact the emotional well-being of a test taker. So for all regents exams that are given, they will only be included in calculating the final course average if it raises a student's course average. In effect, this is a no-harm policy for those taking the regents exam. Regents exams will be listed on a student's report card, but will not appear on student transcripts. All local finals will continue to count as part of the final course average and will be listed as such on the report card. Both regents and local final exams are still mandatory. There is also a special appeal process, which only applies to regents exams. Students must be passing a regents course excluding the regents exam in order to be eligible for the special appeal, whereby any student who earns between a 50 and a 64 on the regents exam will receive credit for that regents towards a New York State diploma.
Any questions?
Will the regents grade appear on the high school transcript for the middle school regents that are taken?
It's my understanding that will not appear on the transcript.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
I had the same question about the transcript. It was one thing that was not included in the communication that went out to parents, and you, actually, the information you just provided, if we could kind of capture that and push that out as well on our website or something, because there were questions left, I think, from?
Is that from middle school parents?
I'm speaking from a middle school parent, because I didn't get the high school parent communication.
Right, that's, that's what I'm asking.
So it's possible that many other middle school parents have the same question Christine just asked. I know I had it as well, so maybe we could just put that in a central place so that people can get what you just said. Thank you.
So in terms of the, the middle school algebra and earth science, will the average course at the end, will the grade take the place of what would be on the high school transcript? How is that going to work? Because normally, the regent score would be on the transcript, right, for the high school?
Right. So the regents, there will be no regent score listed?
Right. So nothing's going to replace it, in other words, on a high school transcript from the, from the eighth grade classes?
Correct.
Okay.
I don't have any. If the public has, during opportunities for visitors, we can ask. Again, Mr. Bartels.
Back to me. I wanted to take a moment to thank all of our veterans, remember the sacrifices and heroics this past Memorial Day. They have provided us with freedoms which we use to engage in debate over differences and opinions. John O'Shea. John has been a committed and involved board member for all of his years on the board. He started with his fight for a bond issue to dramatically improve our buildings and grounds, and was a thorn in my side, I mean, the side of the general contractor, all along the way, ensuring they moved expeditiously and worked with the best materials and designs. He's continued that fight throughout his time on the board with all capital projects and for all buildings. He was just as concerned for the elementary schools as, for all the elementary schools as he was for his own home school. When it was his assignment, John refused purchase orders with a fine-tooth comb, questioning anything he did not understand, and asking if we were getting the best price or the best service. John always took a special concern for education, ensuring that all students got the best of everything, whether it was a special education student, someone interested in robotics, the TV studio, an athlete, musician, or an actor in the drama club. John's fight for all students will be missed. Thank you, John, for all your hard work and service over these many years.
Thank you. Opportunity for, board members, Erica?
While this year has certainly presented its fair share of challenges, we are ending in a better place than where we began. Our new superintendent, Mr. Gavin, has the vision and skill set to make excellent happen. Mrs. Love, our Assistant Superintendent of Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services, has set the stage to transform special education offerings and programs. In addition, Mrs. Love and Mr. Bartels' combined effort has finally brought pre-K to the youngest learners in our district. We have dedicated to the review of our curriculum and conversation regarding our programs K through 12, ensuring appropriate options for all students. We have shown a spotlight on our athletic department. Together, we have added much-needed assistant coaches to many of our teams, refined fundraising policy, and added two new sports. I'm truly excited for what is to come. Our future is very bright. To all of our students and their parents, our guardians, to our administrators, our teachers, especially our soon-to-be retired teachers and our newly-tenured teachers and our staff, congratulations on a year well done. I wish you all, especially you, Mr. Bartels, a very restful summer. To our graduates, our fifth graders, our eighth graders, and our seniors, congratulations. I know that we can expect great things from all of you as you move into your next chapter. I would like to thank the community for their support in passing our 2022-2023 school budget. Congratulations to Donna Downing on winning election to this Board of Education. I look forward to collaborating with you. Finally, to Mr. John O'Shea. Over the past 12 years, you have demonstrated, not by words, but in action, in every decision, deliberation, and decision you have made, that your priority is to our children, your commitment is to this community. There is a saying, "Do all the good you can for all the people you can in all the ways you can forever long as you can." You have been the greatest advocate for our kids, John. Your legacy is all of the good you have done and will undoubtedly continue to do. Personally, I would like to thank you for imparting your grace in a listening ear. Most importantly, thank you for believing in me. This can be a very lonely job. Your support and trust has meant so much to me. Thank you so much, John.
Thank you.
It's such a wrap-up meeting, because it's our last opportunity for board members, so bear with me, I want to thank many people. This is always a special meeting as we celebrate the life cycle of a Rockville Center district employee. Thank you to all of our teachers who served as mentors, as this is such an important service you're providing by sharing your wisdom and expertise. Congratulations to Dr. Walsh and our amazing teachers receiving tenure this evening, this year. I enjoyed looking back on your work over the last few years, and I'm so proud of all you've accomplished so far. Thank you for committing to the children of our district. Retirement is a bittersweet notion for us here. We are so sorry to lose such amazing staff members, but at the same time, so happy for each of you. I wish each of you a healthy, happy, and restful retirement, and thank you for your hard work and dedication to our district. I'd also like to thank all of the families and foundations that provided gifts to our students tonight. Thank you very much. I also want to take a moment to share that our very own Kelly Barry was recognized at the Hop Bog School Board meeting at the district in which she's a teacher and IB coordinator at Hop Bog High School, in advance of being honored on June 9th with the Outstanding High School Social Studies Teacher Award by the Long Island Council of Social Studies Teacher. She was chosen after an extensive application and selection process, and will receive her award at a special ceremony that will take place next week. As the winner of this award, she will also present at the 41st Annual LICSS Conference. I wanted to reiterate what one of her colleagues had to say about her. Kelly is a passionate educator who has mentored and taught countless students and teachers with compassion and knowledge, which has allowed many students to develop a love for history and the social sciences. She plays key leadership roles in the instruction of history as a social studies teacher at Hop Bog High School. Mrs. Barry is a reflective practitioner. She's always searching for ways to improve and engage her students. She brings new and exciting opportunities to her colleagues and her students. She's always excited to share her knowledge and expertise. Kelly is committed to having students understand and enjoy history. And I thought that encapsulated how I feel about her as a board member as well, and I would like to congratulate her on this honor.
Congratulations to all of our student athletes who have been putting Southside on the map throughout the playoff season. Best of luck to men's lacrosse tomorrow night and our spring track team as they compete this week as well. We're coming off of another amazing concert season, so thank you to Dr. Zouar and the music department staff for their beautiful spring concerts. I loved watching the children back and, at their craft and being happy and performing for us. A huge thank you to the community for passing our school budget for the 22-23 school year. I'm excited for the year ahead. I have to thank Mary Lou Celberti, our district clerk, on a phenomenal effort. Her and her team put, it's a huge undertaking to run our election and budget vote, so thank you so much to Mary Lou for all of your hard work. And this was her first year going it alone as a district clerk, and you rocked it, you were amazing, and we're very appreciative of you. Thank you so much. There are five people in the community I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to. Dr. Donna Downing, Mr. John O'Shea, Mr. Michael Ludwig, Ms. Merrill Sussman, and Mr. Michael Luquezi, for running for seats on both the Board of Education and the Rockville Center Library. And congratulations to Donna, Michael, Luquezi, and Merrill on your new positions. I've known Donna since long before I was a board member, when I was a PTA president for Hewitt, and she was a council president. She was always someone who I admired for her commitment to the district, and I know she will be a very valuable member of our board. She's a true leader, fair, knowledgeable, dedicated, and innovative. I'm looking forward to all that you will bring to the board. I've also known John O'Shea for many years. We met a very long time ago. I actually met his wife first at Holy Trinity back in 2010, and then met John years later after doing committee work with him before I was a board member. For the last five years, we've worked together as board members, and I don't know the board without Mr. O'Shea. I've really appreciated our time together and would like to sincerely thank him for his service to our district over the last 12 years. When he decided to run again in 2018, he said it was because he felt there was more he wanted to do. And I admit it, I admire that he recommitted himself then and was willing to do so for another three-year term. It's not an easy task, so thank you so much for putting yourself out there again, Mr. O'Shea. I have full faith that you will continue to do amazing things with the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation, and I wish you the best of health, luck, and happiness in your board retirement. Thank you very much for everything you've done for our children.
Thank you.
Another thank you has to go out to Mr. Bartels, who really carried us through this last year. I'm so appreciative of everything that he's done for us and led our team through, you know, a crazy time, another crazy year, but thank you so much, Mr. Bartels. We have so, absolutely, he deserves it, he does. He's been a wonderful person to work with over the time that I've been here, and especially this year, so thank you. So since this is the last meeting, just want to wish all of our graduates a congratulations, and as we break for summer, I wish everyone a safe, healthy, and happy summer. Recharge, relax, enjoy, and I look forward to serving under Matt Gavin's leadership starting July 1st. Thank you.
We still have one more board meeting.
Congratulations to those that received tenure tonight. It is a very special milestone in one's career, and I can't wait to see what lies ahead for each of you as you continue to grow and develop as a professional. Congratulations as well to all of our retirees. Thank you for your many years of service to our district. Your impact on our students is endless and cannot easily be quantified or adequately measured. I wish you each happiness and health as you begin your next chapter. Thank you as well to our mentors as, for your leadership and guidance. These special moments allow us to reflect on the profound impact made on countless numbers of students, their families, and our community at large. Please know that our appreciation and gratitude are deep and heartfelt. Thank you to the community for approving the budget. Congratulations to Dr. Downing. I look forward to working with you on the board. John, for the past 12 years, you have worked on behalf of all of the children of our community as a member of this Board of Education. Thank you for all that you have done and all that you will continue to do to support our students through your work with the foundation and elsewhere. I wish you much health and happiness as you move on from your work on this board. To all of our students and their parents that have supported them, thank you for all of your hard work and dedication. Congratulations to just about finishing up the school year. In a special way, I would like to congratulate the fifth, eighth, and 12th graders. Congratulations to the class of 2022. Lastly, Mr. Bartels, you are the epitome of a team player. You stepped up and you stepped in when we needed you, and you did such a magnificent job this year in leading this district, and I cannot thank you enough for your constant reflection and willing to just go above and beyond every single day on the behalf of our students and staff, so thank you. Lastly, I want to wish everyone a happy and safe summer. Thank you.
It's so hard to go last. Congratulations to all of our retirees, newly-tenured mentors, and new employees. The Personnel Action Report this evening is exemplary of the collaborative cycle of quality education. Looking at the list of retirees who have spent their careers not only teaching thousands of students subject matter, character development, and civil responsibility, but also providing guidance and knowledge to their colleagues throughout their years, is a testament to the family of educators of Rockville Center. There are brand-new hires on the list who will benefit from our newly-tenured and faculty mentors. The list continues, contains individuals beginning new chapters in their careers here with promotions. We thank each and every one of you for the integral part you play in educating our children, and wish you luck in the future, whether it is here with us, in another district, or in your retirement. I want to thank the Mason family, the Tommy Ruhl Foundation, the Ryan O'Shea Foundation, and the Booster Club for their generous gifts to our community. Congratulations to Southside Varstey baseball team on winning the county championship, the girls' lacrosse for their great showing in the semifinals. Track and field qualifiers are on June 3rd, and we have many division champs already on the team in many various events. Girls' softball is also producing several all-county honor recipients and an all-conference winner. And the boys' lacrosse team will pay, play for the county championships tomorrow night versus Manhasset. Good luck. Best of luck to all our students taking the regents and final exams, and to our seniors and our graduates from the fifth and eighth grade. As they close out the year with awards and ceremonies, graduations and proms and festivities, we wish you all the best. So this is the last regular meeting after serving for 12 years on the Board of Education for Mr. John O'Shea. I want to thank you, John, not only for giving tirelessly of your time and energy over the decade to ensure that the children of Rockville Center receive the highest quality education, but also for being a true representative of the people of Rockville Center. Above all things, you're a wonderful listener. No matter what seat you occupy on the board, you always are receptive to the voices of our children, parents, and educators alike. You have provided a seat at the table for so many. You've been an advocate to the special education community, a voice for parental choice, a leader in ensuring access to mental health for our school district, an example of empathy, understanding, and kindness despite not always being met with the same. You literally rolled up your sleeves and personally laid the bricks in the Booster Club walk, but you figuratively paved the way for so much more than that. You created a path to a more open and transparent Board of Education, having public discussion on so many topics over the past year that deeply mattered to our school and community. You continue to shine a light on mental health awareness, to erase the stigma surrounding the topic, getting our children, faculty, administrators, and community involved in the conversation and finding solutions. And I know you will continue this important work through the Ryan O'Shea Foundation. While your voice may come from a different microphone... While your voice may come from a different microphone, you will continue to advocate for all of our children. Perhaps one of the most important contributions you've made is our new superintendent, Matt Gavin. I look forward to the bright things to come. Thank you, John, for being you. You will be missed.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the community for supporting the budget, the most important thing the Board of Education does to keep our schools running the way, you know, we've talked about for six months now. So that's so important to how the school district will function. I'd like to congratulate Donna on her victory on the board seat. Good luck to your term. For me, it's always been a pleasure. Congratulations to all our retirees. You know, that's what they're going on for the rest of their life and they're leaving their function here in Rockville Center. Congratulations to our tenured teachers and administrators, and congratulations to the mentors that helped that program go on, to all our teachers. I'd just like to read a statement if that's... I want to thank the Rockville Center community for the privilege of representing you for the past 12 years. I ran for the board 12 years ago and again over the past few months with the singular goal of doing what is best for the children of this district. I had no hidden agenda. I'm not indebted to any group or political party. I just wanted to represent all of you and make our district a better place for all our children. I am so grateful for all the support this community has given me, and although I lost my seat on the board, I have made so many cherished friendships and the process. My own family and all the families of Rockville Center have endured many challenges in the past years. We have shared both tragedies and triumphs, enjoyed many successes, and have learned from our failures. And I hope and pray we have all learned that our children's mental health must be a part of all the decisions we make as we move forward to create a better school district. As we move forward, we need to forget the failures of our prior superintendent, honor the exceptional work of Mr. Robert Bartels for getting our school district through a very difficult time, and welcome our new superintendent, Mr. Matthew Gavin. Through my many hours of conversation with Mr. Gavin, I'm confident he will be transparent, accessible, and a goal-driven leader that we have been in dire need for here in Rockville Center. As the community moves forward, I hope the willingness to be involved at the board level continues, and just as important is the involvement of the community members at the PTA level. Only then can we be assured that what happens in our schools is representative of what the community supports and not just a select few. As I move forward, I will continue to advocate for the children of the Rockville Center School District through my work on the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation. I plan to keep the conversations surrounding mental health going so we, as a community, can erase the stigma, allowing our young people to reach out and receive the support they need to achieve all they can be. Thank you. Opportunity for visitors.
Hi, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Kavanaugh. I live at 69 Raymond Street. I'm a school social worker and a mother to Rory, who is eight, and Patrick, who is six. I just fed my boys dinner, and I knew I owed it to them to throw on some clothes and get down here to speak to you. I'm also very glad to see our new superintendent in attendance tonight. In case you didn't see it, I photoshopped your head onto a tracksuit. We could talk more about it later if you want. But I digress. I wish I was here to talk about something funny. Thank you for speaking about safety protocols. I'm happy to hear that this is something on your minds, but I think we can do even better. I'm happy to discuss concerns privately regarding specific buildings, but I think that's inappropriate for a public forum. I'm finding it hard to process how often we are hearing about communities in the U.S. completely destroyed by gun violence. I think it's easy to default to the idea of it won't happen, it won't be us, what are the chances? But I know as someone who has worked in education that preparation is truly next to godliness. We cannot accomplish anything, not curriculum changes, IB, AP, whatever, until we have a concrete and comprehensive evaluation of safety and security protocols at all district buildings as soon as possible. No system is perfect, and I would echo Ms. Messier's sentiment regarding consultation with outside security firms as well. I can only speak for myself as an employee at an educational institution when I say that I want to be adequately prepared to do whatever I can to protect myself and my students. I think the dedicated staff and teachers in our schools would say the same. I urge for a continued commitment to this training. I'm not speaking as a critic of your work. I am speaking from the viewpoint of a terrified mother. I need to know that we are doing everything we can to keep our kids safe. No one wants this. I don't want this, but the brutal reality is that these things are happening, and any level of complacency in these situations can mean life or death. It's not hyperbole, it's reality. I urge you to prioritize this planning above all else. Our children's lives may very well depend on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Liz Walter, 28 Dorchester Road. Welcome, Mr. Gavin. I've said it before, this is a great school district. Mr. Bartels, thank you so much for all the work that you did this year. Donna Downing, Dr. Donna Downing, congratulations on winning the Board of Ed seat. I want to thank all of you, Board of Ed administration, for all your hard work during yet another difficult year. You've dealt with so many challenges with equanimity. In particular, I'd like to thank John O'Shea for his 12 years of service to the district. In addition to the countless sporting events, musical, and drama productions I've seen Mr. O'Shea attend, I specifically recall Mr. O'Shea attending three special ed forums during the 2017-2018 school year. As a Board of Ed member, I'm sure it would have been much easier to only attend celebratory events as student achievement. Yet Mr. O'Shea came to special ed meetings where many parents were discussing desperate stories of defeat. He listened, and he showed that he was a representative for all students. Those meetings led to many positive changes for our special ed and general ed students alike. Mr. O'Shea, thank you for being an advocate for all students. I wish you well, and I know you will continue to advocate for all students through your foundation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kathy Baxley. I live on Hawk Lane. I just wanted to read something quickly in honor of Mr. O'Shea. The heart of a volunteer is not measured in size, but by the depth of commitment to make a difference in the lives of others. Volunteerism is one of the most selfless acts that we can become involved in. To volunteer to be a trustee on the Board of Education takes extreme commitment, and I'd like to thank John O'Shea for his countless hours of commitment to the Rockville Center School District and our children. 12 years. 12 years ago, John and I became friends through the work we did for our schools, first through PTA and then through committees and projects and the passing of a bond, rallying residents and working for the good of our children. Our children were quite young at Riverside and at Hewitt when John first started on this board, and now our youngest are going to start their third year of college. Time flies. John was always the person I could go to with concerns as a parent, as a PTA president, as an advocate, and then as a resident. He always listened, always responded, always got an answer for us. He is to be commended for that. 12 years is an awfully long time to be dedicated to a board, especially as a volunteer. He is to be thanked for that. When terrible tragedy struck, we worked together to create something good. I am proud of the work the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation has done for our children, for our community, and I am glad to serve on the board of the foundation with John as its leader. I respectfully ask that the school administration and the Board of Ed continue the very important focus on mental health and support for the children of this district in the coming years, and I hope you continue to accept our ideas and programs that only serve to help our youngest. There is something truly special about being able to contribute to the greater good. Volunteerism has been shown to improve a volunteer's mood, decrease stress, and increase strength. The benefits of volunteerism are full circle for volunteers and the communities that they serve. Thank you to John O'Shea for showing us his dedication and strength and for bettering the education process for our children.
Thank you.
Hi, Karen Burge, 15 Hendrickson Avenue. I just wanted to welcome Mr. Gavin again, welcome Donna Downing. But I came here tonight without my partner, Debbie, who couldn't be here with me. She apologized. But I came here tonight to personally tell you, John O'Shea, how appreciative we are of all that you have done in the past 12 years to support all of our children. We were always very appreciative to have you attend our SEP meetings, our SEP forums, and we know you spend a lot of time reading all of our emails, too. You were not just there to listen and to learn, but you understood and you cared about our children and yet advocated for them to the best of your ability. Your hard work was never taken for granted, and we were not... Without your dedication, we would not be where we are today. Please always know that you have made a difference, and we are so appreciative. We wish you luck and success in the next chapter of your life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Gina Marie Bounds, 24 Ardley Place. Welcome, Mr. Gavin, and so nice to see you tonight. I'd like to take a minute to say congratulations to Ms. Downing. I wish her all the best of luck and support as she enters into this new role. And of course, as always, I try to grab you every time I see you, Mr. Bartels, but thank you again for stepping up for our children. I saw it again following unfortunate events in Texas. I saw you at school that day. Just gave me a little bit of extra comfort just seeing you, so thank you. I'd like to say a special thank you and express my utmost appreciation for John O'Shea and the 12 years of service to our children and our community. Shortly after I moved to the district, I became an advocate for special ed, and soon after that, impassioned to provide access to mental health. Special ed and mental health are at the heart of me as a parent, and this is how I met Mr. O'Shea, who was also a fierce advocate for both. I was drawn to his sincerity and humble support and ability to not only listen, but to truly make you feel that you were heard. Lots of people listen, but not everyone can give you that feeling that you truly have been heard. I hope that as he leaves his seat on the board, the board continues to focus on all of our children, those high performers, as well as those with special needs, those who need better access to mental health. I hope they continue to focus on community transparency and again, for ensuring that as a community member, that you don't just listen, but that we feel heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. As we move on, before we move on to the minutes, I just, we never voted on the gifts. So I'd like to... Can we take a vote on the first three gifts, please? A motion to accept the gifts.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the gift from the Ryan Patrick O'Shea Foundation, can I have a motion to accept the gift?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Kevin, motion to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor? Aye. Kevin, motion to approve the financial reports as listed on the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Kevin, motion to approve the receipts as listed on the financial reports?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Kevin, motion to approve items for action, A through... Where are we? A through P?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kevin, motion to adjourn into executive session for discussion of?
Employment history of a particular individual.
I don't think your mic's on, ma'am.
The employment history of a particular personnel. I've never been told I'm quiet, so...
Thank you.
So moved.
The second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kevin, motion to adjourn this portion of our meeting?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Thank you for your kind comments, and thank you for coming to the meeting tonight. We have one more meeting, July?
June 15.
Oh, June? June 15. It's a public work session. No opportunity for public comment, but we will be conducting business. Thank you, everyone.